Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town Council meeting for November 21st, 2011. Could all please rise for a salute to the flag, please? Counsel Donnell?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
If you'd all please stay up for a moment of silence for our men and women serving us abroad. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Please be seated. Okay, we have, first off, in public comment, I know this is a lot of residents to hear here tonight, and I'm guessing you're probably here for the renaming of Hardy and Hubby Roads. So, just so you know, tonight, we will not be taking any action on that. It's the first reading, so it won't be a public hearing. So, just wanted to let you know so you didn't have to sit through the whole meeting for it. We will be taking public comment shortly, and if you wanted to speak during that, you're most welcome to. But again, we won't be making any decisions tonight on it, but you're more than welcome to sit and speak to it when we do, if you want. Okay, Sue, you have some auditors here?
Yes. Melanson &amp; Heath &amp; Company is here to discuss the fiscal year 11 comprehensive annual financial report, which the council has a copy of, as well as the management letter.
Great, thank you. How are we doing?
Very well.
Welcome. Okay, so, you're here to, obviously, update us on fiscal, how we look, and if you want to start us off, that would be great, and we can probably ask some questions?
Yep. My name's Frank Byron. I'm the president of Melanson &amp; Heath CPAs, and we performed audit services for June 30, 2011. And this is Karen Snow, Audit Manager, with us. And Karen was out here in the field, performing the audit, throughout the audit. I'm going to walk through the highlights of the financial statements, in your case, which is a CAFR, a Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. After I'm through, Karen's going to speak on the management letter, where we had a few recommendations for improvement.
Okay, great.
So, I'll begin with the CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is the thicker of the two documents, fortunately. And I'd like to just walk you through some of the major components of the CAFR, just to make sure everybody's familiar with it, and exactly what's included. Because a CAFR is a very, as the name implies, a comprehensive document. There's a lot of information in there. If you could turn your attention to page one. This is the introductory section, and it's a narrative letter written by management. In your case, the town manager and the assistant town manager for finance administration. And it summarizes, basically, some background about the town, and what some current, primarily economic events are in town. So that runs from pages one through nine. After that, I'd like to turn your attention to page 13. Now, page 13 is an award that the town gets for this document. Now, the award on page 13 is actually for the prior-year CAFR, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. The town submits this report each year to the Government Finance Officers Association, the GFOA, and they go through a very extensive review of the document to make sure it meets all of their quality control, and that all the documentation, all the disclosures are included, and everything's in the format that they want it to be. And if it does meet their criteria, there's an award, which is called the Certificate of Achievement Financial Reporting. And the town has actually received this for the past eight years, and it's not very common, particularly in New Hampshire, to receive this award. I think there's only seven or eight municipalities in New Hampshire that actually get this award, and Londonderry is one of them. So, you're to be commended for that. Also, you're to be commended for just the timing of getting this accomplished. We were in here performing the audit, primarily in the month of September, and the audit got completed at the end of September, and that's a very quick turnaround time for the town to get the financial books closed, reconciled, ready for audit, not to mention pulling together all the information that's required for this CAFR. Most towns don't pull together all this information.
What is usually the outcome of the towns that don't?
Well-
And what is the timeframe? So, we pull it together in how much time?
Yep. Well, you get your books closed, really, in a matter of a month and a half to two months or so.
We were out here July 25th for the audit, so your books were closed and reconciled. The year-end is June 30th, so within-
Less than 30 days.
Yeah. You were-
What do other towns look like?
Well, most towns have a goal of trying to get the audit completed within six months of year-end. So, by 12/31 for a June 30 year-end, to get the audit completed, and then the financial statements drafted up and presented within another month or a month and a half after that.
So, I just want to make sure, I want to check for understanding, make sure I understand what you're saying. We get done in four to six weeks, and most others get done in four to six months?
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure I clearly understood that. Thank you.
Yep. The next page I'd like to point your attention to is page 15, and this is the independent auditor's report. Now, out of this entire document, it's really this page and the following page is what we were hired to do. This report is our opinion, where we provide an opinion as to whether the town's CAFR is in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and this is what we would call a clean opinion. So, in our opinion, yes, these financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and meet all of those audit standards. So, that's the best opinion that you can get. There are no exceptions. After that, the next section of the report begins on page 17, and runs through page 25. This is called the Management Discussion and Analysis. And what this section attempts to do is put into words what the numbers say in the financial statements. It attempts to summarize the results of operation for your general fund and all of your major funds. It discusses some of your budget policies, some of your debt policies, capital assets, your fixed asset policies, major initiatives that are going on. That all gets documented in this section. There's some trend information comparing the current year numbers to the prior year numbers. What I'd like to do, though, is go beyond this to the actual number pages, which begin on page 28. Pages 28 and 29 are a pretty unique perspective of the financial statements. This is what's called the entity-wide pages, and what it does is it consolidates all of the town's funds into one column, basically. You'll see one column on page 28 called governmental activities. Now, included in that are all the funds of the town. The town maintains several funds. There's a general fund, you have your sewer fund, your cable fund, police details, police airport service, capital reserve. They're all capital projects. They all get consolidated into this one column, and then they get reported on what's called the full accrual basis of accounting, which is the same basis of accounting that a business would follow. And what's different about it is things such as capital assets, which are your fixed assets, get reported as an asset on page 28. You'll see those about a third way down the page. You'll see the heading capital assets, and there's two categories, land in construction and progress, and then other capital assets, net of accumulated depreciation. Those are the fixed assets of the town, which include primarily your buildings and land, but also furnishings, equipment, projects that are in process. They get capitalized here and depreciated over their useful lives. Similarly, this page is the only page that reports long-term liabilities, and those are reported about two-thirds way down the page. You'll see non-current liabilities, and then the first category is bonds payable, and then compensated absences, which is employees sick in vacation time, landfill post-closure costs, and then OPEB, which is other post-employment benefit liability. The OPEB liability is a fairly new liability. This is a result of an accounting principle that came out about three years ago, called Government Accounting Standard Board Statement 45, GASBY 45. And what it requires is that any liability for employees and their retirement, any benefit that they get for health insurance benefits, has to be actuarially tracked. Now, the town doesn't directly pay anything for its retirees for health insurance benefits. However, the retirees can participate, basically a COBRA-type program, in your health insurance. The reason there's a liability here, though, is because the retirees become part of the same pool as your regular employees, and because the retirees tend to be more expensive if they were to be getting their own insurance, not being part of the town's pool, as a result, the town's rate goes up. So, it requires actuaries to determine exactly how much the town's rates go up because of that, and the actuaries calculate an overall liability for past and current employees for what the, that, it's called the implicit rate. The excess that the town has to pay for health insurance, because the retirees have the ability to purchase insurance through the town's plan. The overall liability is $8 million. That's what the actuaries calculated, but they came up with what's required as a 30-year funding schedule for that, should the town actually fund it. The amount that the town doesn't fund of that 30-year schedule each year is what gets reported as a liability on this page. So, the number that's reported right now is $1,843,213. That number's going to continue to go up, to the point that it hits $8 million at the end of 30 years, unless the town funds it. In New Hampshire, I'm not aware of any other communities that are funding that right now, though. The page that follows this, page 29, is also entity-wide. It's really, it's a complete consolidation, but it's the income statement for that complete consolidation. There's not a real lot of meaningful information in there. I was going to skip right beyond to the next page, which is page 30. And page 30 has a lot of meaningful information. This is your balance sheet submitted on a fund accounting basis, which is the way that the town tracks its books, and a way that the Department of Revenue looks at your books when they determine the amount of your fund balance that's available for reducing the tax rate or other sources. Focusing in on the first column, which is your general fund, your cash balance on the top is about $40 million. Then comes some of your receivables, which at the first is the property taxes of $1,027,000. There's a footnote for that, for future reference for you, on page 47, which provides a detail by levy year of those receivables. But the bottom line of these receivables are that they're all leaned. So, these are all protected receivables. The town is accruing interest on the unpaid balance on those. I believe it's 16% interest, so it's either 14% or 16% interest. So, it's a very high interest rate, and they're protected. So, the town will ultimately collect those dollars. Going down into the liability section, the middle of the page, I want to point out just a couple numbers in here. After the first couple, which are accounts payable and accrued liabilities, that's your normal accounts payable and accrued payroll, is deferred revenues of $941,000. That is an offset, for the most part, to the receivables I was just speaking on. It's not a direct one-for-one offset, because generally accepted accounting principles say you can keep your books open for revenue recognition for property taxes for 60 days, for two months. That's called the 60-day rule. So, really, that $941,000 represents the receivables, your property tax receivables that existed two months after year-end, so August 31st, 2011. And it shows up as a liability called deferred revenue, because it's revenues that's deferred until you ultimately collect those property taxes. When they're collected, they'll be considered revenue at that point. Thing that's significant with this account is generally accepted accounting principles say it should be reported as a liability, but the Department of Revenue, when they look at your fund balance for determining the amount that is really available as a funding source, they add that number to the fund balance. Because the way they look at it, you will be collecting those dollars. You may not have the dollars in hand right now, but you ultimately will. Going down, the next account, which is taxes collected in advance of $29,69,000, those are the taxes that were collected for your fiscal 2012, the year that we're in right now, levy. Because you mail your bills out in May, a lot of them are collected in June. These are the collections on those taxes, but it's actually for the year that begins in July of 2011. And that's where most of your cash, back that very first line that we're looking at, $40 million, sounds like a lot of cash, but it's really because of the property taxes that were just collected that month. Down into the fund balance section, these fund balance names are very different. This is a new accounting principle that was effective for June 30, 2011, for the first time. This is the Government Accounting Standard Board Statement 54, GASBY 54, changed the name of the fund balances. Now, what's included in these categories, the non-spendable, $125,900, that's an offset to some prepaid assets. It's a one-for-one offset of an asset that you have on your books, because those monies are not available for any other purposes, because they were already spent for those prepaid purposes. The restricted of $1.9 million, those are capital projects funded by bonds that are being carried forward. They haven't been fully spent. The committed is a combination of capital reserve funds. For the first time now, because of this new standard, capital reserve funds have to be tracked in your general fund for financial statement purposes. So, of that $1,765,000, $598,000 of that is actually capital reserve funds, and the rest of it represents articles that are being carried forward to be spent in 2012. Then the assigned fund balance is a combination of encumbrances, open POs at the end of the year, of about $733,000, and also the use of some of your fund balance that was voted to be used in your 2012 year, of $523,000. Now, what that, what you're left with after that is an unassigned fund balance. That used to be called undesignated fund balance. Of all the numbers in these financial statements, it's probably the most important number. The amount is $3,309,342,000. It's important, because that is used as the starting point for the calculation of the amount of fund balance that's available as a funding source, if you want to use that to reduce the tax rate or for capital purposes, which is what you typically use it for. It's down about $660,000 from where it was the year before, but it is still a very strong balance. Now, the bond rating agencies, this account is important, because the bond rating agencies place a lot of attention on that number. They like that number to be anywhere between 5% and 10% of your budget. That's what they use as a threshold, and they say if it falls within that 5% to 10% range, you have a strong fund balance. Well, that $3.3 million is 11.8% of your budget, so they would say that that's a very strong fund balance. And your, the bond ratings that you have received recently indicate that, that that's something that the bond rating agencies are impressed with, is the fund balance that you have. They're also impressed with the fact that when you use some of your fund balance, you use it for capital items. You don't just use it to reduce the tax rate. That would be looked upon unfavorably by them. Now, the Department of Revenue, I mentioned before, when they look at your fund balance, they would take that $3.3 million, and they would add that deferred revenue liability of $941,000 to that. So, they would look at your fund balance to be about $4.2 million. So, that's more than the way generally accepted accounting principles would recognize it. But it's a, it's a very strong fund balance. The, to flip to page 32. Page 32 is the same funds, fund accounting basis, but this is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, otherwise known as an income statement. Just want to turn your attention to one number. Third number up from the bottom, net change in fund balance in that first column, it's in parentheses, $1,644,331. In parentheses means, if you were a business, this would be your net loss for the year. So, your revenues were short of your expenses by $1.6 million. Now, that may not look good, but it's more of a paper loss than anything, because there were some very legitimate reasons that you spent more than you took in. And what those reasons primarily are is you had a lot of carryforwards that you took in from the prior year that you spent in the current year, to the tune of about $1.2 million. When you spent those monies that were carried forward from the prior year, you didn't have a revenue source for those, because it was revenues from a prior year. The prior year, you probably had a big surplus there. It's a, it's a matter of timing. So, this year, you spent money that was earned in a prior year, so as a result, you had a loss. And the rest of that, that, that loss is the use of fund balance during the year. Now, you did use some of your fund balance as a funding source to fund capital projects, capital reserves and other capital projects, to the tune of about $871,000. And whenever you use any of your fund balance as a funding source, you're actually budgeting to have a loss that year, because when you use free cash, again, that's monies that were earned in prior years, not the current year. So, there is no, there is no revenue on the top for, called fund balance, on this page, but the expenses, when you spent it, are reported here. If we could turn now to page 34, which is the budget versus actual page for the general fund. This is a summarized presentation, and just for your own informational purposes, there's a much more detailed summary in this CAFR report. For the top part of the page, which is your revenues, it's pages 80 and 81, very detailed. It summarizes pretty much line by line what the town budgeted versus what it collected. And for the bottom part of the page, which is your appropriations and your expenditures, those are reported on page 82 and 83. It's a much more detailed budget presentation there. The top part of the page, which deals with the revenues, we have two columns, the original budget and the final budget. In your case, they're the same numbers, because there were no special town meetings that happened during the course of the year. Then the actual amounts are almost identical to the numbers on a previous page, except timing differences get erased on this page. For example, things like encumbrances that I mentioned before, where on a previous page, because you spent a lot of monies that got carried over from the prior year, it showed that you had a loss for the year. Well, on this page, those don't get reflected in here. Any expenditures that relate to the prior year do not get put in here. However, encumbrances at the end of the year get treated as if they were expended. And the reason for doing that is because it's a, it's a 2011 budget presentation, and it doesn't, the generally accepted accounting principles don't want any of the prior year expenditures, expenditures of prior year encumbrances to confuse the numbers. So, this is strictly dealing with the 2011 budget. The right-hand column is the variances. Anything in parentheses is a negative, and anything non-parentheses is a positive. If you look at the subtotal in the middle of the page for the total revenues, it's $182,144 in parentheses. So, the revenues were short of the budget by $182,000. However, the bottom part of the page, second number up from the bottom, you'll see $843,769. These are what we would call a turnbacks. This is what the departments did not spend or encumber at the end of the year, therefore it got closed out, $843,000. So, if you take that $843,000 on the appropriation side, back out the shortfall of $182 on the revenue side, the bottom line, the bottom right-hand number is a positive variance of $661,625, which added to your fund balance. Anything in that column that's positive adds to your fund balance. So, you did well. One thing I'll point out also in here, going back up into the revenues, the last of the revenue lines, there is a line in there called use of fund balance, $871,456. Now, even though I mentioned previously, when you use some of your fund balance, it's not really a revenue. On this page, it gets entered in here as if it was revenue, really just for budgetary comparative purposes. You budgeted to use $871,000, therefore it gets put on this page as an actual revenue for $871,000. So, you were able to beat the budget, that bottom right-hand number, by $661,000. However, you used $871,000, so you weren't able quite to recoup everything that you used. The goal is typically to try to at least break even, try to recoup what you used in your fund balance. You still do have a very strong fund balance that I mentioned before, at almost 12%, so it's not a concern at this point, but it's just not a trend I think anybody would want to see going forward, that your fund balance start declining. The last of the number pages I was going to mention here is the, the next page, 35, which is fiduciary funds. And in your case, these are your agency funds, and I just want to point out that it's made up of two pieces. Down in the liability section, there's escrow deposits, which are performance bonds, monies that the town is, is holding, primarily from contractors in town, and the school funds, which are school-related capital reserve funds that the trustees of the trust funds are holding. That really summarizes the numbers I was going to speak on. I just want to point out a couple other things in this report, so that you're aware of. Beginning on page 65, and running all the way through 92, are what we would call the combining schedules, and these provide a lot more detail than the numbers I just went through. I was speaking primarily on the general fund, but on the page that had the general fund, there was also another column called the non-major funds, which is a consolidation. And it's made up of probably 15 or so funds that get reported in this section here. So, this section provides a detail, columns for each of those individual funds, and then a total that carries forward to the pages that I just went over. The last section of the report begins on page 93, and this is the statistical section. And the statistical section runs from page 93 to the end. Page 115 is where the report ends. And these are primarily 10-year trends. There's a lot of valuable information in here, summarizing trends in your fund balances, your revenues, your expenditures, your debt. There's a lot of good information here. There's demographic information, discusses populations for the last 10 years, median income in town, unemployment rates. There's just a lot of good information in here. That summarizes the comprehensive annual financial report. The bottom line on the numbers is that the town is in very good shape. You have a very strong fund balance, and the other reserves that you have are in very good shape, too. I didn't mention your sewer fund, but your sewer fund has a very strong fund balance also. So, there are no negative indicators that I saw in your report. Town's in very good shape. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions on the numbers or on the CAFR?
Not for you. Why were we $100,000 in the hole in the fire department? That'd be my, my first question. I don't even know tonight, but it jumps right off the page.
Predominantly station coverage.
So, overtime. So, we were understaffed, so in overtime, we're $100,000 over.
Predominantly. It goes to that line. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you provide suggestions to the management as to how they could make things a little bit better?
Well, we do have a management letter, where we had some recommendations.
That was that first couple pages, yep?
Yep.
Okay.
Actually, it's a separate report, if that's what you're-
Yeah, it's a separate, smaller document.
Yes. That's where we, we put our suggestions to management for ways they can make improvements and things.
As you said over and over, if you keep going into that reserve fund, then eventually it's going to, the percentage is going to go lower, and we're not going to get the same rates, so.
And we haven't seen that trend yet, you know, but it is something that all of you should be aware of, that you don't want that to go down, because that, the bond rating agencies look primarily at that, and that is something that they have been very impressed with, as well as other things, but that's one of the key factors that they mentioned.
In the, in the community of communities that you audit-
Yep.
Can you give us some, you have, we have a very singular focus here on one town. You have the benefit of a much broader focus. Can you give us some comparative analysis as to where Londonderry sits within the group of communities that you do audit?
Yeah, well, on different factors, one is your financial strength. You're in very good shape. You know, from an outsider's point of view, I'd say the town does a very good job at managing its fund balances, its reserves. The bond rating agencies have been very impressed with that. I mentioned that earlier. The town does a very good job at maintaining its books, also. When we come in to do the audit, I mentioned earlier that, you know, we're in here the end of July or so, beginning of August, which is very unusual, particularly for a town this size, to be able to pull all that together that quickly. So, the town does a very good job at maintaining its books. And also, you kind of stand in a very limited group in compiling a CAFR, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, particularly in New England. There are not a lot of communities in New England. I think I mentioned New Hampshire, maybe seven or eight towns do it. Massachusetts probably has nine or 10 in the whole Commonwealth, and- And down south, it's much more popular, Texas, Florida, some of those states. Pretty much everybody does it down there, and has always been doing it, but not in New England. And it's been an effort to pull all that together. You know, there's a lot of information in there and a lot of ticking and tying to make sure that the numbers are very accurate. And the GFOA has been, they do an evaluation of it, I mentioned earlier, and they actually provide a critique each year. And the critique that the town has received over the past couple of years has been just a couple minor type things, reminder-type things that they mentioned in there, and no real findings that they have in their critique. So, overall, your, your financial operations are maintained very good. The town does a good job at maintaining the books. Your, your numbers look very good, and it's impressive that you do a CAFR and you get it all done so quickly.
On the, on page 34, when we talked about licenses and permits, $835,000 negative. Is that re-classed with some of the other categories of revenue?
No, I don't think so. If you turn to page 80, you'll see more detail on that.
So, that's actually a loss of license and permit?
Yeah, it's, yes. It's, I think the budget might have been a little bit too high on...
Motor vehicles?
Yeah, motor vehicles. So, on page 80, if you go down about a third way down, you'll see motor vehicle permits, and you'll see the subtotal in right-hand column, $713,000. The, I think the, the revenue estimate was a little bit too high on that. The actual, I think, was pretty comparable with what it was the year before.
I just, I just see some similar numbers in charge of services and investment income. Looked so close that I thought maybe...
Yeah, no, the investment income is just because the, you know, rates, you know, dropped tremendously.
I was hoping, anyway, it wasn't down that much.
Well, it's, the budget versus actual is down, but the trend is steady at about $5.7 million at least.
Where's that trend?
What's that?
You have another page that shows trend?
No, I, I just looked it up prior, so...
It wouldn't be on that year-over-year trend that you had?
I think I have, no, because it's too summarized. I do have last year's report here.
Joe, the last three years are in your budget book.
Yeah, 98, 99 shows licenses and permits for revenues, right? Page 98, 99?
Oh, it probably does, yeah.
Yes, actually, it does, yeah. So, actually...
So, we're actually up if you look at trend?
Yeah.
It's just really been since the recession in 2008 that it's gone down.
Did it have a recession?
Yeah. Should I not say that word?
It's a dirty word. It's a true word, but it's a dirty word.
Yeah, and that's, and that's where you...
Economic downturn has...
And that's where I appreciate these trends a lot, as you can see.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, actually, that's a good page to see how it, it was right up where you were budgeting, and then just the last three years.
Makes it a little bit easier to swallow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
One, one question that had come to my mind was, you talked about how it's not really a, this perform, this performance comprehensive, you know, annual review. Why is it not followed by more municipalities? I mean, so are they built, basically, the, the towns and cities that aren't doing it are basically just auditing their own books to make sure that they're doing things correctly?
Well, we, we do a lot of audits. We perform a lot of audits, and just a handful of them are CAFRs like this. So, the rest of the reports, instead of being 115 pages or so, are more like 30 to 35 pages. It's what we call the basic financial statements. All the back parts of the reports, the combining schedules, the statistical information, and the beginning part, that introductory letter, are not included in it. And the reason they don't do it is a number of them don't have the resources to do it. You need to have staff that are pretty technical financially to be able to pull it all together. And, you know, there's a lot of towns, particularly the smaller towns, that don't have that sophisticated financial staffing to be able to do that.
Counsel, one more question?
Kudos to our management for pulling it together.
Okay. Do you guys have any, anything you'd like to add?
Would you like us to walk through the management letter also? Because Karen could do that.
If you'd like to, sure.
Okay. I'll just start out by saying there are no, what we would call material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, which would be more serious breakdowns in the internal controls. So, these are areas where we thought improvements could be made, but they're not serious enough to be called a significant deficiency or a material weakness. That being said, Karen can take over from there.
Sure, this is the smaller document that you have, the management letter, and, you know, the fact that it's very small means that you don't have a lot of issues that we felt, you know, needed to be documented in the management letter. This year, there are three issues, one of which is a repeat from the prior year, and it's, the first one, number one on page three, is about continuing your process of improving how you report encumbered funds. And this has just been an ongoing issue since you transitioned to the New World software. This is a bit of a weakness in the software. And Sue has been working very hard to clean this up and get the audit trail over your encumbrances to be a little tighter. And this is just a, a reminder to, to keep that process up and make sure that any changes that are made to your encumbrances throughout the year, particularly on your appropriations, you have a lot of projects that carry forward for multiple years, your road bonds, some of your larger projects that you are approved by special article votes at town meeting. These are projects that can't be done in a single year, so they tend to carry forward for one, two, three, sometimes even four years. And it's important that the balances of those projects be accurately maintained through this encumbrance reporting system. And so, this is just a reminder to keep working on that and keep talking to New World about, you know, tightening up the reports that we can get from the system to make sure that the encumbrances are accurate and correct. Page four, recommendation number two, a current year recommendation. This just, this is a problem that is very common in municipalities where different departments go out and they apply for grants, and they may not inform the finance department when these grants are awarded and expended. And so, we found a couple of issues where some grants were posted to various accounts in the general ledger. Some revenues were netted against expenditures and vice versa. And particularly with federal grants that must be tracked because if you spend over $500,000 in federal grants in a year, you have to have what's known as a single audit, or a federal grant audit needs to be completed. So, it's very important that grants be tracked and identified as to whether they're federal or state grants. And you had a couple of grants that were error grants that were not tracked as closely as they could have been in the general ledger. So, it was a little difficult for us to find them because they were posted to a couple of different accounts. So, this just helps us if the grants are identified clearly in, in an account that we can look at and know what those federal award expenditures are. And so, we spoke with Sue about this, and, you know, she's very aware of it. And it's a matter of educating the departments. You know, if your police department goes out and applies for a grant or even receives a grant that it gets every year, the federal government is great about all of a sudden making some of that grant error money without really telling anyone, or changing it from state money to federal money without telling anyone. So, it's just very important that Sue and the finance department gets a copy of the actual grant agreement so they can read through the fine print so that we can make sure that we're caption, capturing all of that federal grant money that's received. And the last one, considering segregation of duties issues, this is an accounting term, an auditing term, related to your shared town finance and treasury functions. New Hampshire is somewhat unique in having elected treasurers that, you know, may have a very active role. They, they can be on a, you know, a very active role or a not-so-active role on, you know, in the treasury duties. And this is just a reminder that you do have a municipal code that defines some of your treasurer's functions. Your treasurer does come under your finance and administrative division. And so, we just want to make sure that you clarify the role that the finance division has in any treasury functions that it undertakes if your deputy treasurer or your treasurer is not available to do those functions. It is basically, you know, just tightening up your municipal code and making sure that you're in compliance and that it's stated, you know, what is happening in town at this time. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure I explained that very clearly.
So, is this something that we would put under our agenda to take a look at and redefine?
I'm not sure. I know that Sue and Dave have been talking about this.
We'll look at the municipal code and come back to the council with an amendment to that code.
Yeah, and it's probably just a very small wording amendment, just to put a little bit of leeway in there that isn't in there right now. Any questions on any of those comments? As Frank said, none of these comments are considered to be material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. They're simply areas where we think the town can make a little bit of improvement.
Let's go back to that treasury thing for one second. That's only if we choose to empower the finance department further. We can continue to leave the power with the treasurer.
Correct.
So, we don't have to do anything, and we're not in violation of anything. This is strictly a recommendation. If we choose to keep that authority with the treasurer, we do not have to empower the finance department.
Correct. And if you maintain that authority with the treasurer, then it's a matter of making sure that the treasurer is actually doing what the municipal code is, is stipulating that the treasurer's functions are.
Perfect, thank you.
In the, back to the comprehensive annual report. On page 28, the, we had, you touched on the OPEB liability, the 1.8 million.
Right.
A lot of the unfunded liability. And you said that you're not aware of any towns that have that as a funded liability?
Nobody has been funding what the actuaries are suggesting the towns fund.
So, we're, my understanding is we're paying for that out of operating expenses on an annual basis as it occurs?
Right, through the premiums for your employees.
Okay, is there any, is, is that okay? I mean, in an accounting...
Well, it's, it's consistent with what everybody else is doing.
But it's not what you recommend, or...
Well, you know, from a, being conservative point of view, it's always better to fund liabilities. And, you know, that was the real point of having that GASP statement number 45, which requires this liability to be reported. It's always been an unreported liability. Now, at least, now at least the actuaries are looking at it, and it's being reported in the annual financial statement, so it's getting more attention than it, it used to. It, it would be a great idea to fund it. The number that you have, which is about $8 million, although it may sound large, comparing it to other municipalities across the country, it's tiny, particularly with our neighbors in Massachusetts. Difference between New Hampshire and Massachusetts is, in Massachusetts, retirees get a benefit for health insurance benefits. They share the exact same benefits that current employees get. So, if the town is paying 75% of the benefits, the premium for current employees, they're paying the same thing for all their retirees. For a town your size in Massachusetts, that $8 million liability would probably be more in the range of 80 to 100 million dollars in Massachusetts. So, it may sound like a large number in your case, but compared to other municipalities across the country, it's really not.
But that's not 8 million. Yeah, you said in five years, it's going to be 8 million.
It's 8 million. The actuaries say that right now you should have $8 million in a bank. And if you had $8 million in a bank that was being invested and supposedly earning 5% interest or so...
On what planet?
Yeah, good luck with that.
I know, well, that's the other thing, too.
So, and, and tell me again the reason where the ledger has it at 1.8 million?
All right, so, the actuaries say that the entire liability is $8 million. They're, you're given 30 years to supposedly fund it. They come up with a 30-year funding schedule. And it's weighted heavily in the first few years. That's just what the actuaries do. And so, what this represents is, it's either a three or four, the 1.8 million dollars is the first three or four years of that funding schedule, three years. So, about $600,000 a year is added to that liability. At least, that's the amount that's been added for the first three years. But it's going to take 30 years to get it to that $8 million point.
So, if, if we were to continue in this current scheme that we have as the other towns in New Hampshire, and we continue to fund this out of each year's operating budget on a year-by-year basis, is there, is there any negative impact to our cash availability? Or is, or is, what do you, what do you see as any dangers going forward with our current way of doing business?
Well, just, just the fact that you have that unfunded liability that's building, that will ultimately reach $8 million or so. Really, that's it. And, you know, I compare it to Massachusetts, and anybody in Massachusetts would love to have that number instead of what they have.
So, it's not necessarily a threat to our cash flow or to our ability to balance the budget?
No, because it's a liability also that really only gets reported on this page, which is that complete accrual basis, accrual basis consolidated report. It does not get reported as a liability in your general fund. So, it will never take away from that your unassigned or your undesignated fund balance. So, it's really only reported on this page.
Thank you. What did you call it, an accrual basis what?
Accrual basis of accounting, yeah. Page 28 and 29 is the full accrual basis of accounting. Compared to the following pages, which would be pages 30 and 32, which are a fund accounting basis, which is modified accrual, primarily a cash basis of accounting.
Counsel, have any more questions? If not, I'd like to bring to the budget committee.
I have a question.
You can come back to it. You go?
No, just on, on that, so, your only disclosure on that, the $8 million is in your, is in your notes on pages, I guess, 59 and 60?
Yeah, that's correct. Page...
And there's a supplementary schedule on page 62 that does report the unfunded liability per your actuarial valuations.
The whole point of that GASP statement 45 was just to bring light of this unfunded liability because when it was not reported in the audit, in the financial statements at all, it wasn't talked about. But now, it's a large number, and people are talking about it. There's not much you could do about it other than possibly funding it. In Massachusetts, where, where they, they pay such a large portion of the retirees' health insurance benefits, there are discussions about reducing the amount that the town is paying on behalf of their retirees. So, it's getting a lot of discussion right now. In New Hampshire, you're not paying any of that. It's really all because of that implicit rate where the retirees are part of the pool. Other than funding it, there's not a lot you can do about it.
Is it, why was the, oh, I'm sorry. The only thing I was going to ask, and maybe I'm just not getting it, is if we pay into the retirement system...
This isn't a retirement...
I know, it's health, right? So, we don't pay anything to, we have, we just have an obligation. We don't pay towards it.
Right.
Correct, you don't make any direct payments to it, but there's, because your retirees receive the, the same rate as your current employees for health insurance, there's an implicit subsidy. Because if, if they're in the pool, then you're going to assume their rates should actually be higher, so they're going to raise the rest of the pool with them. I imagine it's...
Well, this is where I'm lost, is who's paying the benefit?
The town is paying the benefit through your current employees' insurance because your current employees, if, I'll just throw numbers out there, and I don't know if these are even close, but if your current, say, family plan for your employees costs $20,000, well, maybe it would only be $18,000 or $19,000 if the retirees were not included in that pool. Because the retirees are older, you know, supposedly have a lot more health issues, it causes the rates to go up. So, it's that difference between the, say, $19,000 and $20,000 that the, the town is paying as a benefit is what you're paying on an ongoing basis. That, that's how it's being paid.
So, if I may, if I, if we were to pay, we were to fund this line...
Yeah.
There would maybe, perhaps be an offsetting... There would maybe, perhaps be an offsetting expense in the active employees' insurance cost. So, it would be almost, would it be a wash?
No. Well, the rates are not going to go down one way or the other. What you're paying for health insurance is not going to go down, even if you fund this. What, if you funded it, you'd be setting money aside, almost like into a capital reserve fund, trying to earn some interest on it. You're not going to be earning a lot on it. The actuaries are calculating probably, to come up with that eight million dollars, they're assuming a four-and-a-half percent or so rate of return, which, you know, you all know that you're not going to be getting that right now. But, but it would be setting the funds aside into, say, a capital reserve-type vehicle. And, and that money is earning enough. If you were to keep putting the money aside, like the actuary said, you would have a pool of money set aside after thirty years, so that it would feed itself, so that the interest that's earned on that going forward after thirty years would be enough to cover the excess, that extra thousand-dollar premium that you're paying for each of your employees.
I'm sorry, I'm just not getting it. If we're covering the employees, the retirees, what's the, what's the liability if they're covered?
Well, see, the actuaries are looking forward to your current employees to the point that they retire. What they're trying to do is capture the expense this year of what it really costs.
Oh, so this is current employees haven't retired yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not just your current retirees, but it's your current employees that are going to retire in ten, twenty, twenty-five years.
I get it.
Yeah.
Is the percentage that, from two thousand nine, two thousand ten, that goes up to two thousand eleven, is that based off of the number of employees? Is that why?
Why the number went up?
Twenty-seven point eight.
You know, it's, it's the actuaries that come up with that, and they, they go, they jump through all kinds of hoops to come up with those numbers, that, you know, we don't audit their numbers, per se.
It's an ancient secret, though. They don't want to tell everybody.
I think so, yeah.
So, you're not really sure why the number would go up in two thousand eleven from the?
It may have to do with, well, it's a combination of, you know, increases in rates and pays of employees. It could be increase in number of employees. It could be an increase in the cost of health insurance.
It's a sliding percentage that will actually cover us when we get to the thirtieth year, right?
And, you know, that, at eight million dollars, you know, by the time you reach thirty years, I mean, it may be a much larger number when they, they keep recalculating it. They, they look at this every two years, the actuaries do. They revalue it every two years.
Well, if I'm hearing right, it doesn't really matter what they're figuring on, because in all reaction, in all reality, the insurance rates are going to pay for it anyway, so either way, we're paying it.
You are, yeah, yeah. And the reason, like I said before, that this Gatsby Statement Forty-five was created is to recognize that number, and it's primarily for the bond rating agencies. See, they're not just comparing London Dairy to, say, Manchester, Concord, Nashua. They're comparing London Dairy to towns in Massachusetts, Connecticut, New York. And just the OPEB issue, you look a lot better than they do, because the retirees are not getting paid a benefit from the town. So, even though you have that unfunded liability, comparatively to other states, you look much better.
Anybody from the budget committee that's in the audience have any questions?
So, one last question, I guess, if we did fund it, would it actually look better for our bond rates and all that?
The bond, the bond rating agencies have a pretty good outlook of the town already, whether, I mean, they would definitely like that, whether it would be a factor that would make you go up a notch, you know, probably not in and of itself, but.
I figured you didn't recommend it, so I figured it wasn't worth throwing anyway, but.
Well, I mean, it would be looked upon favorably, but you're already looked upon favorably.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay. Well, thanks to the staff in the finance department for job well done, Dave, and thank you very much for coming out tonight. We appreciate your time and the update.
All right, thank you.
Very educational. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, we're still in public comment, so if you wanted to speak on anything tonight or on the agenda, you can come right up to the microphone and give your name and your address.
Bill Pingree from Thirty-Nine Hardy Road. It's more of a procedural question. When the September nineteenth meeting, the Harvey Road issue was brought before you as the result of a memo from Mr. Vogel seeking policy direction. There was public comment allowed immediately that ensued for fifteen, twenty minutes or so. Now, Hardy Road, Hardy Road and Hovey Road, the issues brought up today, we're told December fifth is the public comment. Is December fifth going to be public comment, decision vote, and all wrapped up in one day?
So, tonight, what we'll do is we'll read the resolution, and if the council votes to let it go forward to a public hearing on December fifth, then it will go to a public hearing on December fifth. But it also needs the full, it needs at least a three-two vote to pass to go to that.
Okay.
And there's no guarantee it will.
Okay.
So, but if it does go forward, it would be December fifth. It would be a public hearing, and the residents would get to speak on it and explain why they support it or why they don't.
Okay.
So, but we will be, I can guarantee you, we will be discussing it tonight.
From the meeting with the task force that they had, there were about forty residents from Hardy and Hovey at that, and it was not as much a meeting about whether we like Schoolhouse Road or Flaxfield Road or anything. It was, why is the business is getting preferential treatment over the residents? So, be prepared, there will be a big crowd for the December fifth meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tonight does not preclude you from saying what you feel or what you want or anything else. If you have a point of view now, you can speak to it now. That's what public comment's about. We're going to vote tonight whether even to, see, what the chairman, what the chairman's saying to you is, is we're going to read this.
Yeah.
We may say, you know what? We don't like the names of these roads. We may vote not to do it. And then it's got to go back to the committee again.
My recommendation would be.
I don't know if that's going to happen, but that's possible.
My recommendation would be to table it, because there is a documented issue that Fire Marshal Johnson has brought up, that's in the meeting minutes from the Street Naming Commission, that not renaming Harvey Road still presents a safety issue. So, by not addressing that, you're accepting that you've made a decision to keep a safety issue.
No, I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, I suggest reading through the meeting minutes from the Street Naming Commission. The October twenty-fourth meeting was the meeting with the Hardy Road residents. Also in there internal, I believe it's the September ninth meeting, when they got back, I'm not sure that, I'd have to look up the details of the meetings, but it would be worth reading through the meeting minutes from probably mid-August through today of the Street Naming Commission.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Just because you're one person here. Is it that you totally don't want to have Hardy or Hovey changed, or is it that there's some significance? Obviously, you've had your house there, you've lived there for a long time. Would a variation of that name, John Hardy or Bob Hovey, be something that could be?
No, I don't think they're acceptable to the street naming thing anyways. They've been through that. But it's actually Aaron Hardy is the person that was named after, born about eighteen fifteen. Common land transactions between the Hardy, Pinkerton, Gilcrest, Pillsbury family in that area. There's quite a bit of history in town with it. I think there are two major roads that provide access to seventeen other streets you can't get to without going on Hardy or Hovey. I think putting a new street name at the end causes more confusion for mutual aid companies who are trying to get to, say, Gordon Drive, come down Stonehenge and not see Hardy Road that's a well-established road. Between that, it's also two of the three entrances into the neighborhood of the Kings. Between all those properties is over six hundred homes that you could potentially have to go on Hardy or Hovey to get to, and I think it's creating much more confusion than the renaming plan for Harvey Road, which continues streets that already exist in maps, already exist in GPS systems, between High Range, Pettingill and Grenier Field Road. So.
Just out of curiosity, as I'm trying to, just like the council, I was trying to field as much information as possible, what would your suggestion be to deal with the nine-one-one issue?
Reading through what I've read through, it sounds like it's not an actual mandate from the state. It's suggestions, it's advisory, it's recommendations. The original letter from July was stated, given the magnitude of potential change, we are seeking direction of the council to how to proceed and whether to pursue changes at all, some or none of the identified streets. So, it's always been an option not to do anything, and I, I think it was intended. The issue from Swansea was Grove Street and Grove Lane or something. It was intended for severe similar names or homonym-type things. Hardy, Hovey and Harvey are separate words. I recommend leaving them as is.
Okay, that was cool. You did do the Hardy, Hovey.
Yeah.
Separated on purpose, I saw that.
All right, any other questions for Bill? Okay, thanks, Bill. We appreciate your time. Thank you for coming in. Anybody other residents would like to speak?
Not related to this. We will be still talking about Hardy, though, right?
Yeah, well, that's up to the council, but it's in new business, and we're going to be talking about it up here, and if the council so chooses, they can definitely talk about that. That's kind of why we're doing it now.
All right.
I mean, so if you have something to add to it, definitely do it now.
Well, I was thinking about something else before.
Well, I can make it.
Because I just assumed that we were going to go over it later on.
I can make it quick. I can take a straw poll of the council. Would you guys be willing to entertain the residents that are here when we speak on that?
Where are we on that on the agenda? I don't, I don't have a problem with doing it right now.
We're going to be skipping right over to it next. There's nothing else, so.
So, I mean, I have no problem with it.
We could do that.
They're here.
Okay, so there you have it. So, if you want to go take a seat, or what else did you have for us?
I just wanted to what, where the town's at. We're clearing the brush on, on the major roadways now. I know there's still a lot of brush left from the, from the storm, and I'm just wondering if, I mean, is what we see on the side of the road now still going to be taken care of, or?
That would be a question for Dave. Janos, would you like to field that question for us?
Yeah.
Did you hear it?
Chris, I can tell you, I saw a truck on Sunday on back roads picking stuff up.
I'm just wondering, like, are we halfway through, quarter of the way through?
It would still be weeks before we'll finish cleaning, yes.
Weeks? I just, I notice a lot of debris still left over.
Yeah, still quite a bit of debris, yes. It'll be weeks before we'll finish.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? Yep, come on, sir. Just give your name and your address, please, for the record.
I'm in Portus Falls. I live on Fifty-Six Homete Road. I have thirty-six years. I attended both meetings prior in the one, the last week of October, the first week of November, in regards to the name changes. And I was pretty vocal at that time, and I was told that if I wanted to speak, I was allowed, would be allowed, we would be allowed to speak to the council. I came, I met with Dave Karen. Dave told me that the meeting would be December fifth, and that's when all the residents would have that opportunity to speak. I really don't want to get into how I feel right now, but I really feel that you shouldn't vote to table that or not allow everybody to speak. Most people really expect this meeting to be held December fifth.
Well, can I stop you before you get on your rant? We aren't telling people they can't speak. What this is tonight is the council is reading this, okay? We may not even push it to the fifth. It may not get to the fifth. That's the point. We may not be reading it into the mid, so we're going to read it tonight. We're going to take a vote, and the council's going to say, yes, it's going to go to the fifth for a public hearing, where everybody will get to speak and give their views, or we're going to say no tonight, which means it's, this particular thing is dead, because it means it's not going forward.
There won't be any need to talk on the fifth?
Correct.
Okay.
Exactly.
But, but, sir, understand, it can come back.
Pardon me?
Understand, it can come back. We can kill it, and it can come back.
Right, but we'll at least be notified.
And then the fifth, right.
Yes, yes.
People will be notified, reading.
You won't be blindsided.
Right.
You won't be blindsided.
Right.
Sir, the process, and it's new to a lot of people who don't participate in it, the reason that we read it first time is, in effect, to notify the public that it's coming, and then we wait a meeting, and then people have a chance to get it on their schedule and then can come up and speak to it. That's, that's kind of the process we have. So, we have a, we have two readings. A first reading, which is notification, and then the second reading, which is the public hearing.
I understand. It's just that no one else knew about this meeting until today.
Gotcha.
And that's why, that's why it kind of blindsided everybody. And we weren't sure what was going to happen tonight.
I got you.
And we're learning right now.
Mr. Chairman? When we do a public hearing, we, we actually advertise it in the newspaper, so if this gets to a public hearing, there'll be an advertisement in the paper.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, were you, I have one more question. Were you actually saying that regardless of how we feel about this, that we should still hold it December fifth, so we'll be able to hear from the public? Is that what you were saying?
No, that's not what he's saying.
No, I, no.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
I just want to make sure.
He wants to make sure they're able to speak.
If there is going to be a future meeting, that the public will be allowed to speak.
Correct, yeah, absolutely.
Everybody, because everybody has very valid points.
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so what we're going to do, is there any other public comment?
Sir.
Okay, seeing none. All right, so do we need motion to come on a public comment? I always forget that. Okay, we have nothing in public hearings right now. We have no old business, so now we're in new business. So, Resolution two thousand eleven dash eighteen relative to the renaming of Hardy Road and Hovey Road.
Do you read it?
You would like to do that, please? Thank you.
Resolution twenty-eleven dash eighteen, a resolution relative renaming Hardy Road and Hovey Road. First reading today, eleven twenty-one eleven. Second reading, public hearing on twelve five eleven. Whereas the town of London Dairy is enabled by NH RSA two thirty-one one thirty-three to name public highways, and whereas the town council established a street naming system task force to enhance public safety by reviewing and correcting addresses which are noncompliant with NH nine-one-one addressing standards. And whereas Hardy Road, Harvey Road and Hovey Road have been identified as noncompliant, and whereas the town council has given preliminary direction to leave the name Harvey Road in place, and whereas the task force in cooperation and consultation with property owners recommend the following alternate street names. Now therefore be resolved by the London Dairy Town Council that Hardy Road be renamed Schoolhouse Road and Hovey Road be renamed Duncan Road, to become effective on February sixth, two thousand twelve. Properties may be renumbered according to the town addressing policy. So moved.
Okay, so we need a motion, and if we want this to be discussed, we need a second.
A second for discussion?
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor, signify that, and by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Opposed.
Oh, point of order, I think.
Oh, yeah, we don't need a mo, I'm sorry. My bad, my bad.
We're still in discussion.
Yeah, we're just in discussion, my bad. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We are now into discussion for it. So, we'll start off at this end of the table. John, your thoughts?
My opinion's no different than it's been the entire time. I don't see the necessity for the change. I don't, I believe that there's historic value to the names of these roads, and I think there's got to be another way to work through it besides losing all the historic value to parts of the oldest part of the town. And for some of you who may or may not have visited the cemetery that's on that road, Mr. Pinkerton is actually buried there. So, have time, take a look, a little ground, it's the history of your town. It's my opinion.
Thank you, John. Tom?
If anybody had a question, we just heard testimony a couple of folks ago about the fact that this is a recommendation from the state, but our, our resolution speaks to noncompliance. I think I need to reconcile that. Is this just a recommendation from the state, or is this a requirement from the state?
No, the state cannot mandate that we change street addresses without becoming a unfunded mandate.
is this a requirement from the state?
No, the state cannot mandate that we change street addresses without becoming an unfunded mandate, so the state 911 system has adopted standards by which they encourage all municipalities to follow, to hopefully reduce the potential for errors when dispatching public safety equipment. And so they have a list of criteria, which our street naming committee has looked at, looked at all the streets, and these streets have been identified as a number of streets in Londonderry which fall within the 911 criteria whereby they should be considered for a name change to hopefully enhance public safety. So they go, as you know, the committee's been for you a number of times, with a number of different roads, making recommendations to address those, those street names which are deemed to be noncompliant with the standards established by 911, but those standards are not mandatory.
I know the fire chief's not here. I don't see him, but-
Nope.
Oh, there he is, in the back. Sorry, chief.
Can you, can you give us any-
Mr. Chairman, can I ask if we have any occurrences, or what, or what's the frequency of occurrences that we may have had where there have been errors in dispatch or mistakes in the 911 center? And this regarding these three-
Regarding Harvey, Hovey, and Hardy?
Mm-hmm.
I just had trouble saying that, and that, it hasn't been in recent history, other than Harvey, where we've had an issue with, and that's because of business not being on the street. Some are on North Wentworth, some are actually on Harvey, and that was the, more the problem than the actual Harvey history. The problem comes that, as you well know, the regular telephone or the landline has kind of just gone by the wayside in the invention of cell phones, and now you actually, when you speak to a 911 operator, nothing comes up on the screen but a location of the cell tower that you happen to be from. So therefore, you have to say the word of the address that you may or may not be at, and in saying that word, there's, there tends to be a confusion in hearing when there are similar names. 911 has designated, by their criteria, certain names or wording that are constantly used in towns may be confused. That's where they've set it. I haven't seen anything as, I mean, I have to go back and look at the records. I didn't find item, but I know we only had one, and that was on Harvey, as to where they, whether they were located, Harvey or Hardy, at one time.
So this recommendation, at least at this point, is made based on their interpretation of confused pronunciation, not necessarily a number of incidents that have happened where we dispatched the wrong address?
Well, it, over statewide, it started in Swansea, as everybody knows, at Grove Lane, Grove Road. The same similar sounding names are a problem with dispatching public safety. If they forget the road, if they forget the lane, they could be in separate parts of town, and sending one to one way, or having, sending both. And it's happened that they, we've sent two vehicles to different parts that may have been a road or a lane. Kelly Road, Kelly Ave, you know, all the way down to Kelly.
They had issues with that neighborhood that's along the Londonderry Dairy line.
The Whispering Pines was a lot, because it was 3A, 1A, lane lot. That was, that was a mess.
We had multiple cases of wrong dispatch, or confused dispatch in that regard.
That, that's correct.
So I guess in this case, I'm, I'm not feeling real comfortable that we have a lot of objective evidence that, that we have had, and based on our history will have, confused dispatch going forward, other than somebody's assessment of a pronunciation issue. We don't have, we don't have a history of incidents.
I'm not, I mean, I can't, you know, exactly say that, because again, a lot of it goes to 911 and Concord, and we, they may eventually get it out of them, what, what it is. There may be a little confusion at the beginning, but we don't necessarily get it coming our way down the other end.
Well, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation's going to be that there are definitely areas in town, like Whispering Pines, that are confusing nature, and we have a history of potential life-threatening situations, where someone calls for help and we're sending help, but it goes to the wrong place. I'm, I won't be, I'm not comfortable with this change unless we get some supplemental information that says that that's occurring in these three roads as well.
Just, I'd like to make one comment about that. We do this for, for the safety issue. If you leave Hardy, Hovey, and Hardy all in one category, there is that possibility. That's all I can say, is that because of the way it's interpreted, there may be a possibility, so you'll, you're leaving that in the current status.
I'm even suggesting-
Whether we have anecdotal information or not.
I'm even suggesting there may be some data that supports that, but it's not forthcoming at this point.
I agree. Tom?
Am I correct that the street naming task force, as Tom was saying, did it based on the criteria or the commonality of the names, and not because of any-
I'll have to, I'll have to yield to somebody on the task force that set it up, because I wasn't, I wasn't at the meetings to set this up, so. I understand the RSA and 911's system and how it works, but as to the committee, I can't state.
Hi, Karen Marshant, assessor for the town. The name was, these three names were chosen because of their similar sounding when people are calling in for, for service from either police or fire.
But it wasn't because you had problems with dispatch going to these three roads? It was because you-
I can't say that anyone has gone to the wrong property, but the roads have come across the airwaves, so to speak, and have been confusing even to the police officers. Cindy McCann, who just resigned from this committee because she's retiring as supervisor on dispatch, and the police department just told us of an incident in October, or early November, of the responding police officer was going to the correct address. The second police officer responded back with the incorrect road, so he did not hear the road properly when it, when it was called over.
But if I remember that story, he was corrected and sent to the right.
Well, he was, dispatch corrected him, and then he went on to the right. And I don't know if it was Hardy or Harvey.
Thank you.
Are these names typed into a computer that they see on display now? Or is it just all on, all audio? Do you know?
I, having just toured the dispatch centers, they're in front of the dispatchers. If, if I remember, Tim's here in the room, and he supervises that area, Tim Jones. If I remember, if the officer is on his computer, he can see it, but he would only have radio if not on his computer. Is that correct, Tim?
The answer is, it depends. Depends on which car he's in. Not all of our cruisers have mobile data terminals, and also, there is a delay. When the call comes in, the first thing the dispatcher does is send it out over the radio so that that officer can be en route. Then they put all the information in the call, and eventually it catches up with the, with the car, where he can't see it at that point.
Since you're, since you're, since you're standing up, do you, if you could answer this question, do you recall any issues? You've been here a while. I mean, do you recall any issues that can come to mind that have been confusing? Few for Hardy, Hovey, not to put you on the spot, but I'm just wondering if there's anything. I guess I'm struggling with, to me, I think they're very similar, and coming over just from the recordings that we heard, man, oh, man, I would hate to risk 600 people's lives over, you know, miscommunication like that. And I'm just trying to, you know, look for the, for the best alternative here, and, but at the same time, as some of the other councils have said, if we don't have any data over all these several years that have actually had a confusion, issue, why are we making it a big deal right now? So I'm wondering.
I can't give you any specific incidents. I can't recall any offhand. I can tell you that our dispatchers have adapted to it. For example, they will say, if they're sending an officer to Hardy Road, they will repeat it several times, or they will say Hardy with a D very distinctive, and that's just us because of this issue, or they'll say Harvey with a V, things of that nature. But to give you any specific occurrences, I can't, but they have happened, I will say that.
Because that's where I was going with the, you know, the A Hardy, and say the Hovey was Benjamin, B Hovey, you know, at least is that, because one of the dispatchers said the first sound that they hear is the distinguishing sound. So we were hoping to try to get something in the front of the name, so that it wouldn't change the historical nature. As Council Pharaoh said, we wouldn't want to do that, but, you know, things to me, in my opinion, Schoolhouse Road and Duncan Road, that's way, way, way off the table. I mean, you know, something more similar that would be more distinct to the, to the historical nature of the road would, would make more sense, but, like you said, if it's not, if it hasn't been an issue in all these many years, I'm not really sure why we would want to do anything, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, back to me. So, I really haven't had a hard time struggling with this one. This is kind of a layup for, it's as easy as it gets for me. We have, we have a lot of backups in place. It's very easy for a dispatcher to say Harvey, H-A-R-V-E-Y, Hovey, H-O-V-E-Y. I mean, I don't see why we're reinventing a wheel to do this. So to me, I don't agree with it. I think it's a silly idea, and I think it just flies in the face of the history of the town, and I don't see the combination of the names. It's very easy to separate them. So, I mean, I can see a Grove Street and a Grove Lane. That's, that's a duplication of a road. I get that, but this, this doesn't seem like it fits that parameter, so I'm not for it.
Yeah, the only thing I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, is, is as I tried to suggest to the committee, is if, if they can come up with something that makes sense historically, and I don't, I guess they didn't get there with Reed going to the meeting and everything, hey, then great.
Schoolhouse and Duncan?
But, you know, I mean, I don't, I, we're a 300-year-old town. What are we doing?
I'd like to even go one step further and just table the idea completely and take the roads off, because I don't think it's an issue.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that, I'm going to vote no on this tonight, but I think that we should leave the subject open and ask for this or other changes like this, that we get some, some more data other than just a suggestive change from the 911 dispatch. Saying, you know, we've had X number of incidences over the past X number of months of mistaken identity or mistaken dispatch due to pronunciation or whatever. That would, I think that would help me move in one direction or another, but at this point, it feels like it's a suggestion for a potential problem that may or may not ever occur.
Agreed. So I think, the council are with that?
Well, definitely.
I, I would, I would move that you, you've got a motion and a second on the table. I would move that we take a, take a vote.
Okay. And with the parameters of, Dave, if you could get the dispatch committee to give us that, get us that information, prove to us that it's an issue. And I'd also, coming from me as one councillor, I would like to know what the backups are when they're reading these, because it seems to me like a common sense thing, where, you know, I get it that they might mishear it, but if you spell out the letters, you're going to get it. So I'd like that information too, encumbered with the information that Council Donnellan had also suggested.
Yeah, I can tell you, if you go over and you, I mean, we got the opportunity to go visit the two dispatch centers, and even as different as they are, you know, you can hear a pin drop in the dispatch center when you're standing there if you're quiet. I mean, they, you know, it's, it's interesting.
All right, all those in favor of Resolution 2011-18, signifying by saying aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Motion fails, 0-5. Okay, so folks, what we just did was, we just got rid of tonight's, there will not be a hearing on this on the 5th of December. What we have done is instructed the committee, the dispatch committee, to basically give us some more information on it, if it's an issue, and like I had asked the town manager to also tell us the processes and procedures that the dispatch uses to differentiate that to the fire and the police personnel that do respond to calls on those roads. So once we get that information back, I think that'll give us a little bit more intuition on what we need to do going forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on, hold on.
Just so, for information, procedurally, what you just witnessed was, we killed this resolution. It's dead. It, like any other resolution, can also, can always come back to us with a recommendation from town staff or from the town manager. So that's not to say it's dead forever, but the one we have in front of us tonight is dead, and a new one would have to start from scratch.
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on a second.
I was just wondering, and this may be a question for Dave, do we let the-
Hold on, sir, hold on.
Do we, do we say that this comes back December 17? Do we inform everybody that's on those three roads via mail, or do we just put something in the newspaper?
Historically, what we've done is, it goes to a first read, then we put a notice in the newspaper, but I also told Mr. Bowles that any public notice, I would notify him.
Okay.
Okay. Want to step up to the mic?
So what happens to the letters if the people that were mailed yesterday, they're all going to get the same, come the 5th?
Hold on a second. I'm getting you an answer.
Reason we need you at the mic is because, otherwise, the people that-
That home can't hear you.
All they hear is some voice in the background. They can't hear what you're saying.
Karen Marshant, the letters are not in the mail. They are being mailed tomorrow. So they're not out there.
Okay.
There you go.
Anybody in the neighborhood, just tell them there will be no letter, no meeting on the-
Correct.
And if your, and if your road comes up again, you're going to get a letter from the town manager.
I would imagine that probably the reporters that are here are probably going to report that as well in the newspaper, that there would be no hearing.
Unrelated to that, I was really impressed with how much money is being spent and how you folks are coming for it. I was really impressed with that. I don't know who gets the credit, but somebody deserves credit for that.
That's the young lady at the end of the table over here. She's, she's got our back.
Can I speak just real quick?
Of course.
Chris Paul, 118 Hardy. With the question of Harvey versus Hardy, I know that it came up before, that it was a financial burden for the businesses. Does the state bear any kind of responsibility for the fact that they're implementing this and mandating it to the towns? I mean, they, if it affects somebody financially, it doesn't really matter. They don't, they're not held liable.
No, Dave mentioned that earlier. If, if they did, they did mandate, it would be an unfunded mandate, and they're not, not by law allowed to do that, so they can't mandate it. So if we choose to do it, it's on us.
Well, I know that Harvey is the only road that has no, you know, historical significance in the town, so I mean, it would, it would make sense that that would be the one that changed, not to mention the fact that it's such a mess up there anyway. I mean, they might as well just make it a high-range road, you know?
Okay. All right, well, folks that were here for that, we appreciate you coming out and telling us how you feel. Thank you. Okay, let's see. Ordinance 2011-11. Can I get somebody to give that a quick read?
Sure. Ordinance 2011-11, an amendment to the municipal code, Title IV, Chapters IV and IX-A, Title II, Chapter III, and Title VI, Chapter VI. Whereas the Section 310 of the town charter requires a decennial revision or codification of the ordinance of the town, and whereas the town council established an FY11 goal to review all town regulations and procedures in an effort to eliminate inefficient processes or regulations, and whereas administrative and statutory changes require edits to various chapters, now therefore be it ordained by the town council of the town of Londonderry that the municipal code of the town of Londonderry, Title IV, Chapter IV, Junkyard slash Dealers, Title IV, Chapter IX-A, Individual Sewer, Sewerage Disposal Systems, Title II, Chapter III, Special Regulations, and Title VI, Chapter IV. Safety regulations are hereby amended pursuant to the attached summary.
Looking for-
In the title, you've got Chapter VI in, in the body of the language. I don't think there's a VI, but it would be six, yeah.
Should be chapter, should be chapter four instead of chapter six, I see it.
Okay.
Okay.
Hereby amended pursuant to the attached summary, and I'd ask that we wait the reading of the summary, but as included.
Motion, I need a second?
And move to-
Second.
I was going to say, it's the first reading move for a second reading, public hearing on December 5th, 2011.
Thanks, Tom.
Second.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, motion and a second. Any questions on this for the council? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of moving Ordinance 2011-11 to the December 5th meeting, signifying by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative. Motion passes 5-0. All right, Resolution 2011-19 relative to the establishment of a Solid Waste and Environment Committee. Spinning. Oh, everybody's spinning? Wow. I can read that one. All right, Resolution 2011-19, whereas the town has benefited from the participation of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee to help guide town policy regarding solid waste and recycling issues, and whereas the committee's role has grown to include such initiatives as beautify Londonderry, town welcome signs, and anti-littering activities, now therefore be it resolved by the Londonderry Town Council that the Solid Waste Advisory Committee be named, renamed the Solid Waste and Environment Committee with increased responsibilities as set forth in committee charge, a copy which is heretofore attached. Can I get a motion?
Are you making a motion?
Can I make a motion? I can make a motion if I pass this. Okay?
Are you motioning?
I'm making a motion.
Second.
All right. Joe, can you read the motion? We got a motion and a second, so.
Okay, where's the motion?
You want to just, no, you don't need to read it. You just need to take a discussion, ask for the discussion on it.
Okay, so discussion on the resolution?
Any discussion?
So I don't, so I don't see any discussion. Could I get a vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. So it's, Chair votes affirmative. That's 5-0.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2011-12, which is an amendment to the zoning ordinance relative to the amendment to the demolition delay ordinance, with a second reading and a public hearing scheduled for December 5th. Whereas the planning board has received a request to amend the demolition delay ordinance, and whereas the requested rezoning would increase the age of a structure subject to the provisions of the ordinance from 50 to 75 years. And whereas the planning board has recommended that the town council act favorably upon these requests, now therefore be it ordained by the town council of the town of Lunenary that section 5.3.2 of the town zoning ordinance be amended to change the respective timeframe from 50 to 75 years.
Okay, I get a motion?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Seeing none? Ordinance dash, I mean, 2011-12 relative to the amendment of the zoning ordinance regarding demolition delay ordinance be heard on December 5th, 2011. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative. 5-0, motion passes. Okay, all right. Now to the fun part, which we all came here for, right? The FY13 budget process.
I thought it was motion to adjourn.
Okay, Dave, I'm going to give you the floor for this one.
Well, I'm just looking for additional. I mean, we listed approximately 10 action items for, from Saturday's workshop. And we're currently, we have distributed those tasks to the various departments. And we will have that information for you for your next budget workshop, which is a week from today. And that's, except for a short item for the police department, that's a meeting totally dedicated to, to the budget process. So I guess at this point, it may be appropriate, if I can ask, is there any other questions for data, so we can work on that for the next couple of days and make sure we have all the information to, to both the council and the budget committee for next Monday. We have two meetings scheduled next week, one on Monday, one on Thursday. At the conclusion of Thursday, I do need a vote from the council as to what your preliminary budget recommendations proposal for the first public hearing, which will happen, I believe, after the first of the year, is at the last weekend in December. I'll have to check the schedule.
We, we weren't able to reschedule that Thursday, right?
No.
So I'm scheduled not to be here that day, just so everybody knows.
Okay, well, let's poll the council. We'll start with Joe. Joe, did you see anything in the budget that you would like Dave to take a look at?
Just the things we talked about last Saturday.
Dave, are you looking for a, a number from the council tonight?
No, what I'm looking for is whether you require any additional information. Let me just, if I can, Sean, let me run through the items. We do have, there are questions regarding a list of the FY13 budget information listed by the departments with present adjustments. The council asks us to bring back the ambulance fee resolution. The library has requested to look at the original budget request and provide documentation on how those funds would be expended. The chief, McCaffrey, is currently investigating the cost benefit of additional personnel versus overtime. And also, any impact of, in the future, potentially providing ambulance service to Litchfield. Also, looking at the issue of SAU funding for the SRO. Meg is looking at the issue to provide the impact and expense of having three election polling places in the community. The budget committee would be setting up a process to have a liaison during collective bargaining, or at least meet with them in non-public, given a sense of where those, where those negotiations are. Borrow will be back before the council on December 5th to review the library technical plan. We are currently working on the road bonding and transition to property tax funding. And we're also developing what our recommendations would be should the town decide to adopt the default budget as opposed to the council's recommended budget. That's what we have for an action list as of Saturday.
Mr. Chairman, may I also suggest that we include the budget committee and see if they have any additional questions for the town manager as well?
Yep, absolutely.
We'll keep it in the papers.
Before we do that, I'm not sure if this was the appropriate time we were talking about the enhanced special need medical cuts for the emergency shelter. Brought it up at the last, last time we went over the different items. I know we were collecting that. Is that something we're still doing, separate from the budget?
Well, the chief is investigating that and attempting to identify grant opportunities to purchase those cuts.
Grant indoor donations.
Right.
And I apologize if I didn't hear it. Are you doing an analysis of the, the road bonds and?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Sorry. All right. I'll chime in after. Budget committee.
At this time, I don't think the budget committee has anything to add other than on Saturday, we went through a lot of detail. Still have to scrub a lot, go through the book, just come back. And hopefully, we'll have more to, to add come the next meeting. I believe Dave captured all the actions that I had as well. So I think we got that covered. Going forward, you know, we'll, we'll make recommendations where we see we, I feel we, we should and so forth, and take it from there on next Monday and continue on.
All right. Thanks, Todd.
So I'll defer to, excuse me, I'll just defer to anybody else in the budget committee if they have anything else to add, please just come on up and, thanks, Todd, and speak for mom.
I didn't come here just to prove Todd wrong when he said that he had. I was confused in the workshop as to that management services or that management account. As I understand, it's kind of a miscellaneous account. I'm just wondering if maybe I can just talk to Sue and get a breakdown. I think that's where perhaps we can look to try and cut things. I mean, sometimes things go into a miscellaneous account that might otherwise not fit in a certain line item. And I think that if we're really looking to, to cut to the bone, that, there might be areas there that we need to look at just to, to make sure we do our due diligence.
Okay.
That's my only request.
So is that something you can work with?
Yep. Great, thanks.
Anyone else in the logic committee? Okay. All right. Dave, so.
I've got a few things.
Okay, yep. All right, go ahead, John.
All right. Dave, in light of our, of our audit report, and in light of the warrant for four additional firefighters, want to get an expectation of how overtime salaries, we're going up 17.2%. Do we think, I know there'll be some overtime anyway because we're demanding station coverage at 110, but what's that going to look like going forward? Is it going to go from 100 to 150? I mean, a little bit better idea around that. We're going up $30,000 in training benefits. All these things look like small numbers when you're looking at them, but when you look at the overall, cleaning and maintenance is going up $104,000, 26%. And if we could bring some resolution to that staffing issue that came up at the end around the cable studio and outfits, if we could get that resolved and.
We are working on that as well.
And, I'm just mentioning others. And, yeah, we just, and I think that's about it. I think everything else is covered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those resolutions will be back Monday. Is that how you said? Or an idea of those, what we want to do?
We're going to report out back on these a week from today.
Okay, so my take on, on the process is where we're at is, I think it would be, you know, given the economic times, I think it would be great if you gave us an idea of what the default will look like and what it's going to take for you to get to that default. Because, you know, it's, there's a very real possibility that we'll recommend a budget and it may not pass and they might take the default. So we kind of need to know what that's going to be. So that's, that would be my suggestion to start, so. Okay? All right, great. Any other questions?
And just, if anybody has any questions between now and Monday, just send me an email and we'll try to make sure you get information.
And the same, same goes to the budget committee?
Right.
If you guys have anything, if you want to, you can address it, you can either send it to Todd and have him send it to Dave, or you can just send it individually, but probably best to go to the Chair, the Chair. Okay? All right. That is it for.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of 11:711 as published.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of approving the minutes of 11:711, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative. 5-0, motion passes. Other business, liaison reports. We'll start off with Joe.
I have had any.
Okay. Tom?
I don't have one. I missed the last planning board meeting.
Okay. Nothing? John?
Dave and I went to the ribbon cutting of the new Pettingill, not the, not the.
Airport extension.
The Ray, the Rizorick Way Road. Kick that one out. And we all, we got, all got a piece of the ribbon and Andrew's going to do something with that. And I have airport access, I have airport committee meeting on November 3rd, in which they're going to update us on how the flights are going to change at MHT.
They're going to lower the prices.
I would have no idea.
Can you suggest that?
You have any influence there?
I make, I make suggestions all the time. They usually fall to deaf ears.
Okay. I have nothing from last week. There was a heritage committee meeting. I did not make it. I was busy. Story of our life. And that's it. Okay, so that's it for liaison reports. Town manager, you're up.
Yeah, the only thing I'd, I'd ask is to establish a date for the storm report. I would recommend, although it seems a ways out between your budget process and the holidays, I don't know if the citizens will be engaged, I'd suggest we look at Saturday morning, January 7th.
Okay.
That'll also give us time to work utilities, to make sure they're re-engaged and get a better sense of how they want to handle these processes going forward.
Is that something that the media could kind of put down a story? We're going to do, we're going to have a meeting. And it's basically, what Dave was saying is we're going to engage PSNH as well as staff. And we'll be able to have the public come in on Saturday, January 7th, possibly 8:00 AM, I would guess.
Yeah, 9:00 AM.
9:00 AM, 8:00 AM. And we'll basically talk about the issues of the October snowstorm as well as anything that comes up between now and then.
Will, will PUC be invited as well?
Well, I've got to communicate with them and see to what extent they want to become involved. We certainly can send an invitation.
By the way, do we have any FEMA reimbursements over that storm?
I believe the chief has left, I think it was declared a state of emergency. Have you heard that, Sue?
I guess we've been filling out some grant paperwork.
So we just don't know at this point what the extent of the assistance will be.
I wonder if, if some of that grant could include the brush cleaning efforts that are underway?
Yeah, that's what I meant, the extent. And that's really the critical one. Because usually they cover your shelter expenses, your emergency, your overtime and your public safety expenses, other than your ordinary customary expenses. And brush is usually the one that's the variable you have to negotiate.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion of appointments, reappointments, and resignations as follows to various boards and committees. A reappointment of Paul Donahue to the Lunenary Housing and Redevelopment Authority for five years to expire 12/31/16. A reappointment of Martin Strugus as an alternate to the solid waste advisory committee, three-year term to expire 12/31/14. Resignation of John Whistler from the solid waste advisory committee. A reappointment of Mary Soares to the planning board, three-year term to expire 12/31/14. And lastly, a reappointment of Janet Chikaki to the Heritage Commission, three-year term to expire 12/31/14.
Can I get a second on that motion?
Just a point of order.
Sure.
There were a number of other appointments added after. And if you go to the agendas, and I apologize for the confusion. If you go up to the agenda, there are, I believe, six other.
And a reappointment of, if I may continue, a reappointment of Deb Nowicki to the Lunenary International Exchange Committee, three-year term to expire 12/31/14. Reappointment of Jay Hooley to the ZBA, three-year term to expire 21, sorry, 12/31/14. Resignation of Rosemary Dan from the Lunenary International Exchange Committee. Resignation of John Whistler from the solid waste advisory committee. Resignation of Vicki Keenan from the ZBA. Appointment of Martin Strugus to the Southern Hampshire Planning Commission as an alternate member, term to expire 12/31/12.
Mr. Chairman, I have Martin as a two-year. I think Tom said it was a three-year. If we want to amend that.
Which one, number 10?
No, for the solid waste advisory committee.
I'll amend my motion to, from a three to a two-year term.
Got it. Okay. Okay, so we have that motion out there. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Nope. Just to thank John Whistler and Vicki Keenan for their services and Rosemary Dan as well.
Great. And I'd like to thank everybody for, you know, the people that are re-upping and continuing in their positions. And thanks for the good work and thank you for stepping up and keeping it going. Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative. 5-0, motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second.
Second? Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those in favor, all those opposed?